All right, this meeting of the Bloomington County Council will come to order. This is the regular session for Wednesday, July 22. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo. Councilmember Scambaluri.
Here.
Councilmember Rosenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Sims.
Here.
Councilmember Volin.
Here.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Flaherty.
You just logged on.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Sandberg.
Here.
I'll come back to Councilmember Flaherty.
He's muted.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, I am pulling up the agenda. Sorry for the delay here. We'll be hearing reports from council members. We'll be hearing reports from mayor and city offices. We'll be hearing reports from council committees, although we don't have any reports on any of these expected. We have one member of the public who would like to speak during this meeting, during public comment. We may have recommendations for appointments to boards and commissions. Then we'll be hearing items for second reading and resolutions. Item one is Resolution 2011, Supporting a Public Health Order and Regulation of the Monroe County Health Department and an Executive Order of the Mayor. Then we will hear legislation for first reading, including Appropriation Ordinance 2003, Especially Appropriate from the General Fund, the Parks General Fund, and the Jock Hopkins Fund. Expenditure is not otherwise appropriated, appropriating a portion of the amount of funds reverted to various city funds at the end of 2019 for the purpose of assisting with Bloomington's recovery forward from the COVID-19 pandemic during 2020. And then Ordinance 2012 to amend Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code and title vehicles and traffic regarding amending chapters 15.12.010 Stop Intersections, 15.24.010 Increased or Decreased Speed Limits, and 15.40.010 Locations to Change Trade Street and Trades S T to Make Her Way. 12.32.080 No Parking Zones to Add Several No Parking Zones, 15.32.090 Limited Parking Zones to Change a Limited Parking Zone, and 15.32.100 Loading Zones to Add a Loading Zone, and 15.32.186 Motorcycle Parking Restrictions to Add Parking Restrictions for Motorcycles and Mopeds, and 15.36.085 Reserve Residential On-Street Parking Permits to Add Temporary Visitor Parking Permits, and 15.40.019 to Add Garage Parking Space Reserved for Electric Vehicles, 15.40.010 On-Street Meter Parking Locations and Maximum Hourly Rates to Add Three Locations, and 15.24.020 Increased or Decreased Speed Limits to Remove and Add Some Locations, 15.12.010 Multi-Stop Intersections to Add and Change Some Locations, 15.12.030 Signalized Intersections to Add One Location, and 15.16.010 One-Way Streets to Remove One Location. We will have additional public comments and then review of council schedule. With that, we will go now to reports from council members. I will start with the order in which councillors appear on my screen. That'll be Councilman Piedmont Smith, followed by Sandberg and Scambaluri. Councilman Piedmont Smith.
Yes, thank you. So we just came back from our break in our council meetings, but certainly the work of city council continued. And there have been many important issues regarding race that have come up in the last few months here in Bloomington. First of all, I want to say unequivocally that Black Lives Matter. And I think we do need to rethink public safety and the ways in which we address public safety in our community. Even though Bloomington police have done some excellent things as far as implementing progressive policing strategies and more guardian rather than a warrior-type police mentality, we can still do more to increase trust and maybe spread some of the duties that are currently done by police to other agencies that might be better equipped for them. So those are some of the things I've been thinking about and emailing about the last few weeks, and I look forward to more conversations as we head into the budget process. So welcome back to all my colleagues, and we'll roll up our sleeves and get to work.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. It has been a very busy break. A lot of communications from a lot of constituents concerned about a lot of things as well they should be. And I do want to begin by expressing my gratitude for the county and for us as a city, those of us who have been communicating about the really important need to wear masks. I know it's controversial in many corners, but as the numbers are growing and we have a large amount of students who are about to return to the community, the wearing a mask is such a small thing to do in order to keep our numbers down and to protect our first-line workers who are caring for those who come down with the coronavirus. So that is something that has definitely been on my mind, as has been on the mind of a lot of constituents. Also, a lot of communications about the fate of the Waldron Art Center, and that, of course, is something that is important to me. And I know I'm on a committee that will be talking about best use of that building once it does return to our care and stewardship from Ivy Tech. And I've been assuring people that it is a valuable anchor for the downtown with respect to the arts. And it is certainly my hope and will be my position in any kind of decision about the future of the Waldron, that it does remain a viable and a valuable asset for our performing artists and the community arts as a whole. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scambaluri.
Thank you. I would not even bother to use the word "break" or "recess" anymore. But I do appreciate the degree to which constituents have weighed in and become part of the process in ways that I think are, in some ways, unprecedented. I want to express my appreciation to those who came to my last constituent meeting earlier this month. My next one is scheduled for August 1st. I'm going to do one more month by Zoom, and then we'll see after that if we could go back to them in person. But I want to applaud those who took the time to write. All of us have gotten emails on issues of policing and social justice and racial equity, and COVID-19 and masks, and the proposed tax that we'll hear more about. I am thrilled to see that level of engagement. And I just want to applaud all of those who took the time to write to us for college. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank my colleagues for their comments. Much has happened over the break, and much like Councilmember Scambaluri, I am loathe to use that word "recess" or "break." However, many things have happened over that month. There's been many discussions involving ratio and social equity that I think will have many, many more discussions moving forward, and hopefully we'll have some action in that regard. I'm also proud about the Stride Center that was officially announced today. From a social equity standpoint, I think that'll do a lot in dealing with our populations that struggle with addictions and those with mental health, and helping in keeping them out of the community correction system. But my comments tonight, and I'll try to be as brief as I can. First thing, I want to say hello to my wife, who is in IU Health Hospital recovering from a knee replacement surgery today. That's where I have been this entire day, and we'll go to after this meeting tonight. I just want to thank God for a successful outcome. I also want to thank members of our community and beyond for their well wishes, their kind words, and their prayers. Secondly, it is my pleasure this weekend to be able to read an Eagle Scout charge to two young gentlemen who will be receiving the Eagle Scout Award, which, as many of you know, is the highest honor in the Boy Scouts of America's Association. I earned this award when I was 16. It has served me well over the course of my life as a seed that was planted that have grown to hopefully reflect what we are today. But part of this Eagle Charge states that these gentlemen will undertake their citizenship with solemn dedication, and they will be leaders, but lead only towards the best. Now, that's just a part of the charge, and I'm looking forward to reading the rest of it. But the point is, I want to congratulate Mr. Aiden Brown and Mr. Justice Belton. Now, Aiden Brown is a high-achieving young man who happens to be white. Justice Belton is a high-achieving young man who happens to be black. Many of you know that even achieving this award is a very rare achievement attained by only a small percentage of those even in the ranks of scouting. Rarer still is a young black man achieving this goal or achieving this honor. I won't spend more time on it, but please, in your spare time, Google it and see where we are and how this helps youth as we move forward and as they mature and grow up. The next thing I'd like to do is acknowledge the passing of Representative John Lewis of Georgia on July 17 of this month. He was representative of the 5th Congressional District in Georgia. Many of you know of his notoriety, for lack of a better term, in the landmark 1965 Civil Rights March in Selma, Alabama, where he survived a brutal beating. There were words in HT Today, words such as dignity, integrity, self-sacrifice, and principles, attributed to Representative Lewis. And what I'd like to note as well, and this is a bit self-serving, I'll admit, but Representative Lewis was a member of a historical black fraternity, Phi Beta Sigma. Now, the significance of that, we're just one of the historical nine black fraternities and sororities that are dubbed the Divine Nine. But I am also a proud member of Phi Beta Sigma, and I am proud to acknowledge Representative John Lewis as my fraternity brother and just a great human being. Now, lastly, I rarely use names. I've done that twice this evening, but I owe a sincere apology to Mr. Ben Ramston. I simply dropped the ball. Now, this started with him coming to the council last year, having some complaints about conditions in his neighborhood area that is in and around the Crawford Homes. Please, no one accuse me of blaming any problems on that situation or those residences. But they were complaints from the neighborhood, from the businesses, nonetheless. I commend my councilmembers Flaherty, Piedmont Smith, Sandberg, and myself for actually meeting with members of this neighborhood, actually meeting with business owners in that area, actually touring the neighborhood and spaces there so we can see firsthand some of the issues that Mr. Ramston brought up. What I promised them and my colleagues was that after we did our investigation and met with people, then I would write a report. Now, this report is not a solution. It is not a cure-all. And the gist of it will be is that all parties that are involved, and there are many, and I won't get into them tonight, but there are many, there are many solutions. But the main resolution or the way that we get there is to get everyone at the same table and openly and honestly discuss their concerns with each other and work toward a solution. And that's the gist of what my report will say when I do it. Again, I want to apologize to Mr. Ben Ramston. After we had those meetings and those discussions, we, of course, had to deal with the coronavirus pandemic. I've had some family health issues. We have a very full city council agenda, among other community responsibilities. I am not offering those as excuses, but simply an apology to Mr. Ramston and members of his neighborhood that came to the city council in good faith. And I will reciprocate by doing the report as I promised, albeit a little late. So please accept my apology, Mr. Ramston. I look forward to talking with you and your neighbors soon, and hopefully we can resolve some of the issues you brought up in the city council chambers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. We go now to Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, President.
Councilmember Smith, do you have a report?
I do. I have something to say.
My screen is frozen.
We hear you wrong.
All right. On this break, a lot of heavy-duty things have happened.
I didn't hear an answer.
Yes, he's speaking, Steve.
Yes.
Okay, keep going.
Over this break that we've taken or not taken, there's been a lot of difficult challenges for us. Racial strife, COVID, a lot of tough things. And one of the things that I reflected on is that we do need to take care of each other and be our brother's keeper. And we're going to get through this, and it's going to be a while before we get through it all. But with, you know, love and understanding with each other, this is the way forward, not divisiveness. So I just wanted to say that, you know, we're wearing masks more. We're trying to acknowledge the challenges we have in our culture with racial strife and with poverty, and we're trying to do things about it. And that is our way forward. And I'm trying to look at it in a very positive way, even though right now it's still pretty tough. So I hope that everyone out there and all my friends and family, people in this community feel the same way, that we'll get through it. It's tough, but so, thank you.
Thank you. Again, I'm having some jitters, so it's hard for me to tell when somebody's done speaking. But if anybody can hear me, we should go now to Councilmember Rosenberg.
Hi, thanks. Quick comment here, I would say. It's definitely been a busy first recess for me. I want to say thanks to everyone who has been more involved or involved for the first time. We've got a lot of issues nationally and locally. I think that warrant public engagement, and it really gives me a lot of hope to see so many people sending emails. I mean, over the last month, we've had hundreds and hundreds of emails. And I'm taking my time to respond to all of them. So sorry if I haven't gotten back to you yet, but I am working on it. And I, you know, I just want to say, I mean, well, first, you know, Black Lives Matter. And I think that this space that we're in now is just such a good opportunity to have conversations about where we should go and how we should challenge the status quo and look at dismantling structural racism in our local laws and policies and procedures here. I think it's a really, it's a crucial time, right? And we've got a lot to do, and there are a lot of steps in this process. But I just want to say I feel so fortunate that there are so many people involved right now, and I want to encourage people to stay involved. So keep emailing, show up at meetings, make comments. We all read those emails, and we all, you know, value that public input here at the local level. So thank you for that, and just looking forward to this upcoming time of working on the budget, setting our priorities, and going forward in the coming months. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, thank you, President Volin. First of all, I wanted to note that I'll have my July constituent meeting this Saturday, July 25 at noon. So welcome, folks, to attend that. The, I think the Zoom link will be posted to the council calendar, and it's also posted on my council member Facebook page, which is just facebook.com/Flaherty for Bloomington, so you can find the link there. We had a good conversation in June at my constituent meeting about, primarily about policing and public safety and structural racism as it affects Bloomington. And I imagine that's some of what we'll cover in this meeting on Saturday as well, though any topic of interest to constituents citywide are welcome. I also wanted to highlight and thank Clerk Bolden and Mayor Hamilton for their announcement yesterday that committing to anti-racism training for themselves and for department heads, and calling on elected officials in the city and in the county to do the same. This is something I've spoken about and talked about in previous statements and posts, and I think is much needed. This work is ongoing and frankly never done. We live in a society imbued with racism and white supremacy, and it's a lifetime of work to unlearn that and learn how to be anti-racist. So I'm really committed to that and excited for the possibilities ahead with that. And I'll leave my report there. Thanks.
Thank you. I see that we've been joined by Councilmember Rallo. Councilmember Rallo, do you have a report? Councilmember Rallo?
I'm unmuted. Hey, folks. I have no report. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, my report will echo some of what my colleagues have said. This is an unprecedented year. I was not able to imagine a year like this one. I'm sure many people can say the same. I remember thinking in December, I can so glad 2019 is over, just so glad. And I want to take those words back now. I am glad that we are discussing an anti-racism training program. I think, I know that some of my colleagues have been involved in discussing the potential for one with Black Lives Matter Bloomington. But the fact that the mayor and the clerk have put out a request for qualifications for such a program, I think is encouraging because I know that, A, the city council, the county commissioners, and the county council have all expressed interest in taking part in such a program, and B, none of those three entities can make a decision on behalf of their colleagues without a public vote. And so, you know, I think that it would be better if there was a program offered by a unitary office that members of, you know, of bodies could attend. And I'm, you know, eager to find out what the details of that plan will be. I do believe that whatever workshop is set up would, I hope it would be open to the public. I don't even know, frankly, if I'm being heard right now. My screen is frozen. In other news, one reason I was slightly late to the meeting was I was on a call with, to discuss the future of the Waldron. Councilmember Sandberg has mentioned in her comments. And I'm very eager to see a new plan for receivership of and operation of the Waldron. I'm excited about the possibilities to make sure that it stays an art center and serves all of Bloomington. We have a lot to do tonight and in the weeks to come. I beg everybody's patience. If you have any questions at all, please reach out to me at volines@bloomington.in.gov with any questions you may have. And with that, we'll move to reports from the mayor and city offices. I would point out that if, that the discussion of the health crisis should be deferred to our discussion of the resolutions on the agenda tonight. So, Mr. Mayor, if you have any reports and items other than the COVID response, please limit your report here to those items. But with that, I'd like to ask Mayor Hamilton to report.
Well, thanks very much. It's really good to see you all again, Clerk Bolden and all members of council. Nice to see you in this meeting again. I have mostly comments about the health-related items. I associate myself fully with all of your comments, but let's move on into the meeting, and then I'll speak about the COVID issues at the right time when you tell me I should. All right?
Okay, thank you. Let's see here. So now we're going to reports from council committees. Seeing none, I will go to reports from the public. We have at least one person who wants to speak. Mr. Lucas, if you would recognize him, we'll give him five minutes. Mr. Alexander should be unmuted and ready to comment. And I know he also had a slide he wanted to display, so just let me know when you'd like me to put that up.
Sure, thank you. Hi, I'm Greg Alexander. I guess I'm ready for a slide. Just leave it up, the whole thing. Thanks. I am so tired of all the conflict necessary to achieve transportation reform. About five years ago, the Bike and Ped Safety Commission asked a staff member how they can enforce keeping sidewalks clear around construction sites. The staff member said he has the ability to issue a stop-work order, but then he said he'd never do that. Disappointing. Fast forward a few years, this January, at the council's land usage committee, a different staff member was asked the same question, and she said they get good compliance, but if they don't, they can always issue a stop-work order. In effect, she said, "There is no problem." This puts her in opposition to me. I've been saying that there is a problem. So I have to counter her, I guess. To make an example, I picked this site, 14th and College, the old Mancino's property. The project is called Co-Live. It's student housing. They effectively blocked the sidewalk for the first six months of this year, parking vehicles, equipment, and supplies on it, often overnight, and using it as part of their construction activities. I made sure staff was well-informed about it. And I'll tell you, I talked to a few staff members who were obviously very frustrated that they couldn't do anything to keep the sidewalk clear. At the last phase of the project, the beginning of July, the contractor was required to install a walk-around. The trouble is, they used the walk-around the same way they used the old sidewalk. They're running heavy equipment through it. That brings us to this photo, the climax of my effort to prove that staff member had been lying about the effectiveness of enforcement. In this photo, a skid steer is in the walk-around. The operator is so confident that he belongs in the walk-around that he's flipping me off as I stand there blocking his path. If you know anything about OSHA or transportation standards, a skid steer operating in the walk-around confronting a pedestrian is the most brazen possible violation. So I stood there for an hour and a half having a standoff with this skid steer operator. I called BPD, and they sent a couple officers who basically explained that they didn't believe there is such a thing as a walk-around. That's pretty disappointing because educating police about pedestrian transportation is actually part of several plans that have passed this council. Planning and Transportation sent a couple men, and they passed this council. Planning and Transportation sent a couple men and they explained to me directly they have absolutely no tools for enforcement. They cannot, in fact, issue a stop work order. At the end of it, the contractor had paid a penalty, though. You can imagine the stir that something like this causes at a construction site. For an hour and a half straight, they had different groupings of half a dozen men telling each other what a jerk I am, telling the cops what a jerk I am, telling planning staff what a jerk I am, telling me what a jerk I am. Altogether, it seems they wasted about 10 man-hours just calling me a jerk. To my knowledge, that's the first penalty any contractor has ever paid for blocking a sidewalk in Bloomington and man-hours. Staff has a culture of being unable to admit failure, unwilling to bring shame to the department. That's a problem because our sidewalks are nothing but failure. They don't exist. They have gaps. They're blocked. There's no enforcement. They aren't maintained. Our intersection and crosswalk engineering is atrocious. This combination of staff that can't admit failure and sidewalk policy that is nothing but failure means every single time this body asks staff about sidewalks, staff lies. I've seen it again and again. I don't want to be at war with the whole staff. I just want to walk around town with my kids. I am so tired. You know, I'll add, a lot of you are going to think I'm making this situation toxic. No, there is nothing more toxic to this sort of public deliberative process than misinformation. It's done been toxic. What I am doing is making it uncomfortable. Making change is hard. If you have been comfortable until now, it's because you haven't been making change. I mean, transportation is the easiest of it. If you want to reform police or housing segregation, you are going to see some discomfort. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. I see Jim Shelton is ready to speak. Is that right, Mr. Lucas?
Yes. And before we get to that, I just want to apologize. I attempted to display Mr. Alexander's slide and took that down. It looks like we've got a few Zoom bombers attempting to disrupt the meeting. So if anybody didn't see that, we'll have that as part of the meeting record and we can distribute that to any members and apologize for any disruptions. We'll try to shut down any disruptive folks as soon as we can, but just bear with us. So I believe Mr. Shelton should be unmuted now and ready to comment.
Yes, I am. Thank you very much. Jim Shelton with the chamber, but speaking on behalf of the court-appointed special advocates. While you guys were on break, CASA office decided to schedule an additional training session to address the fact that due to the COVID-19 impact on families, that puts a dramatic stress increase on the families. And then DCS, Indiana DCS has gone back to their normal, well, what I call normal basis for deciding when to bring a case. All of a sudden, we've got 60 children waiting for CASA. So they've scheduled a training. I will tell you that it starts the third of August. Probably it's too late for you to apply for that, although I would encourage you to do so. You can go to Monroe County CASA.org or call 323-2272 to get more information. The training after that isn't that far away. It'll start October 19th. It will cover the roles and responsibilities of CASA, the typical family dynamics of abuse and neglect, Indiana's child protection law, and then the favorite subject of all CASA's report writing. So I invite people to please consider becoming volunteers to help deal with these children who have done absolutely nothing wrong, but are being abused or neglected by their parents. CASAs are the eyes and ears of the court. They help Judge Galvin or Judge Harvey make the best decisions possible for the futures of the children based on what's going on in the children's lives, the lives of their parents and service providers who are trying to make things better and make re-uniting the families possible. And if it determined that's not possible, to help provide another permanent home for a child as soon as possible. So I invite you to look into those. Please consider becoming a volunteer and thank you very much for the opportunity to tell people this. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Is there any other public comment? Please raise your hand in Zoom and let Mr. Lucas acknowledge you. Any other comments, commenters wishing to speak in chat or hand raised, Mr. Lucas?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. I will move on now. Are there any appointments to boards and commissions from members?
Yes, Mr. President, I move to reappoint Eoban Binder to the Parking Commission, retroactive to February 1st, 2020. This retroactive, thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. I just wanted to, yes?
I'm sorry. It looks like we had one more. It looks like we had one more request for the public to speak. And that was from, is it too late?
From whom?
From Jennifer Crossley.
No, it's not too late. Let's go reopen public comment. Ms. Crossley, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me? Yes. Okay.
Yes, please go ahead.
I just wanted to just say welcome back, everybody. Hope you had a nice break. However, with everything that we have going on in our community, I definitely stand with Mayor Hamilton and Clerk Nicole Bolden and would love to challenge all of our elected officials to make the, to go ahead and take the anti-racist training. It is time for us to really, truly challenge our progressiveness and it is always a great time to learn. And what better time is that to do that now? So again, I stand by Clerk Bolden and the mayor and would love to see our city council officials as well as county take the anti-racist training. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, just for the record, I'm having a strange technical difficulty where I can't see anybody's video feed. I can only hear what's happening. I, so I'm not entirely sure whether I'm coming through jittery or not. Nevertheless, I'm going to pile forward and we're going to go back to legislation for second reading of resolutions.
We were not, we were not finished with the appointment to the board, to the commission.
Oh, I'm sorry. Appointment to boards and commissions. My apology. Thank you. Councilmember Pete Mount Smith?
Yeah, just to reiterate, I move that we reappoint Eoban Binder to the Parking Commission, retroactive to February 1st, 2020.
And that was seconded?
Thank you.
And then I wanted to just explain the retroactive. We did discuss his reappointment in committee. He had just been appointed in the fall of 2019, and so we felt strongly he should be reappointed and allowed to serve longer than just a few months. And somehow that didn't make it into the memo and onto our, into a council meeting. So he has been serving in this position.
Very good. Are there any other questions on the appointment? If none, can we please have a roll call vote on the nomination? Madam Clerk?
Yes. Councilmember Rallo? I'm going to need you to do that verbally, please.
Can you hear you? We hear you, Dave.
I can hear you.
Okay, the host didn't unmute me. Yes.
Councilmember Scambalory?
Yeah.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sim?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Pete Mount Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations to Mr. Binder for his reappointment to the Parking Commission. Are there any other nominations to boards and commissions? Seeing none, we will now go to legislation for second reading and resolutions. Madam Parliamentarian?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that Resolution 20-11 be introduced, read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
The motion is second. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Yes. Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sim?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Pete Mount Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes. All right, that motion carries. Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis only?
Okay. If you could give me just one moment, apologies. Resolution 2011, supporting a public health regulation and order of the Monroe County Health Department. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution expresses approval and support for the Monroe County Health Department's Public Health Order issued July 7, 2020, the mayor's executive order 2002 issued July 20th, 2020, and the Monroe County Board of Health's Public Health Regulation issued July 21st, 2020. Please note, this resolution was revised after release in the council legislative packet, but before introduction at the July 22nd regular session. The revisions included adding language to support the mayor's executive order 2002 and to support the Board of Health Regulation passed July 21st.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that Resolution 2011 be adopted.
Second.
Okay, I think this is where Mayor Hamilton will now present an update on the health crisis, perhaps along with an official from county health, and will explain the latest that drives this resolution. Mayor Hamilton, please go ahead.
Thanks. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, you're coming in loud and clear.
Great. First, I would know, I think the county health order was on the 17th, July 17th, not the 7th, just in case that was in there. Very, very quickly, I want to just note, as I didn't say earlier, you know, I have, I would ask folks to review the address that I gave on July 16th to recover forward, which really tried to talk about the action we need on four major challenges in front of us. The pandemic, that health challenge, the economic collapse that we're in the middle of, racial justice challenges that we face, as well as climate justice. That, those four areas, many of which you all mentioned in your opening comments are ones right in front of us, and I'd encourage us to continue to focus on action on those four. And one of those four, the health pandemic, is what I'll talk about now. In terms of updating on the COVID status and plans, particularly reasons for accelerating the order of the county, I do want to note a thanks to our colleagues in county government, particularly the county health department, as well as colleagues from Indiana University and IU Health who have done a great job, I think, of working all together collaboratively to try to address the challenges that the pandemic brings to us. I think many of you know, I've been talking for quite some time urging that we adopt some common sense steps to slow the spread, to reduce the risk of major backsliding. Those particularly included the adoption, encouraging the adoption of a mask ordinance and rule, as well as the adoption of certain steps that we should take to limit the potential super-spreader events. I'm really pleased that the county health took very important steps on Friday, the 17th, to put in place a mask order effective, really, two hours after the health order came into effect at 5:00 PM on, on the 17th, Friday, the 17th, we adopted a mask order. As you probably all know, the governor has taken that step today, though. We're taking that step locally 10 days ahead of the statewide order, and I think that's a prudent and good thing to do. And we all should be wearing masks and we can talk about the details of that. The second major step was really focusing on potential super-spreader events. And I'll note, these took place in significant part because the data in our county was starting to show real areas of concern. Hospitalizations had tripled over a week. We started to see a greater prevalence in the testing that was being done for those who had COVID. That was particularly noticeable in the percentage of 20 to 29-year-olds, that cohort. We were starting to see a rise in that number. And while our, our hospitalization beds, the ICU, the ventilators and others were not in danger at present, we certainly knew, we saw those signals. We also know what's been going on around the country, and we certainly want to try to do all that we can not to backslide, not to mention the fact that some 30-plus-thousand individuals are probably returning to our community over the next four weeks. So we wanted to be ready, four to six weeks, wanted to be ready for that. So besides the masks, I'm very pleased as well that the county took steps to basically reimpose and re-clarify some restrictions on bars, restaurants and nightclubs, on the one hand, as well as on social gatherings. And both of those, in my view, and I think the health experts were important as ways to try to restrict the potential for super-spreader events, events where you can have multiple significant numbers of people being infected at one time. And so I will report to you that I felt that direction was very good. The county order put that in place for the entire county effective Friday, July 31st, two weeks from the date of the order. I felt, given the indications we've seen in the data, as well as from around the country, and the, the cost of accelerating that order versus the potential benefits of having it in place earlier, I did decide to put in place the executive order that you referenced. We issued it on Monday. It goes into effect at noon tomorrow. And essentially, it does exactly, it accelerates the date of July 31st in the county order to tomorrow at noon, July 23rd. So that will require bars, nightclubs and restaurants to have only service at seated patrons, to seated patrons. They must be seated in the, in the establishment. They must wear masks to and from those seats. There are limits on numbers of folks. The seating itself must be separated by a distance of six feet and does not allow congregation or, or gatherings in those establishments beyond that seated service. It also eliminates bar service. The second thing it did was change our approach to social gatherings, again, for potential super-spreader events. The numbers to remember are 50, 100 and 150. A social event that is not in a public space, not a public accommodation, is limited to 50 people. That's basically in a private home or a place that is not open for public engagements. 50 people maximum. They must be masked and distanced unless it's immediate family members. Masks, there is, there are exemptions for certain people and certain eating and drinking, but the distancing is mandatory for those events as well. And then the 100 limit is for indoor public accommodation events, such as a banquet or wedding or such being held indoor with similar distancing and masking requirements. And the 150 limit is for outdoor events. There, there may be exceptions that people may apply for. For example, I can tell you that in Switchyard Park, if we're doing a major outdoor concert in the main stage, we may be able to seat several hundred people, but we would apply to the health department for exemptions from that restriction to explain how we can keep the distancing and masks at numbers larger than 150. I think these are really important steps to take for our community. We're, we face a real challenge ahead of us. It's not given what we'll be able to accomplish, seeing everything else going around in the country. I've talked to some of the club and bar owners since I put the order out. I think they understand that we're trying to protect our community's future and avoid major resurgence or backsliding. It's going to take all of us. It's going to be really important for people to comply with the masking and the avoiding of these potential super-spreader events. That's going to determine how our next two or three months go. We have enforcement plans that I can talk about if you like, but most of this is focused on education, encouragement, responsible behavior, and that's what's going to drive us. We're in a decent spot right now, but with MCCSC and RVB opening up likely soon, and with Indiana University and other institutions. but with MCCSC and RVB opening up likely soon, and with Indiana University and other institutions increasing their activities, these are very important weeks, and I encourage everybody to do the right thing. It's common sense. It's based on science, and that's what's going to determine our direction for the future. And thanks. I'll be happy to take questions at the appropriate time. And thank you for endorsing this resolution, supporting this resolution, because your voices will be very important to, to add to the emphasis that's, that our community needs to hear. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If there's no other presentation, we'll begin with questions from councilmembers. I see Councilmember Rallo's hand raised. Mr. Rallo, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Hamilton. I think this is a very prudent step to take for the community. Could you describe, well, do you anticipate any enforcement challenges? And especially as students return? Any concerns from Chief DeKoff?
I'm sure, I'm sure we'll have some enforcement challenges, I will say, on the, you know, each of these is, let's talk about masks, let's talk about public accommodations and institutions, and then let's talk about private social events. In terms of masks, now we have a statewide order going into effect in Monday. I think the climate is going to be helped with that. It's, it's the right thing to do. We are not seeking to, and I don't think we will see, you know, large numbers of fines. I think what we're going to see is an attempt to really build the culture of compliance. If enforcement is needed, it can be done. Most of that will probably be done by institutions, restaurants, shops, stores, institutions that will, will put those into place, like employers, like we do. In terms of establishments, again, I think in terms of seating, masking in establishments like restaurants and bars and such, we expect they will be leading that compliance. We've had very good collaboration, cooperation from the Chamber of Commerce and other business organizations, Downtown Bloomington, Inc. As I said, I've talked to several of the proprietors, and they seem to be, in general, I would say, quite responsible and wanting to do this right. Everybody wants to avoid a major resurgence. We, we could have compliance issues in institutions. And if so, we and the county health department, alcohol, beverage, police, fire, others have ways to enforce. Probably the most challenging is the social gatherings in private settings on how that will be enforced. I guess I would say the good thing is we've had practice at this since March, when we had these orders in place in the early days of stages one and two, if you remember those. The Indiana University Police Department and the Bloomington Police Department worked hand in glove, very collaboratively, to try to assure that private gatherings complied with those size limits that we had back then. And I think that's what we'll probably see here, too. We expect to have hotline for people to report. My office will get calls. Some of you may get calls. But again, most of this will be focused on education, compliance, the culture, kind of think smoking ordinance and how that took place, but we will be ready for enforcement as needed.
Mr. Rallo, any follow-up?
No, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hamilton, for that presentation. And I also, obviously, am one of the co-sponsors of this resolution, so I'm obviously in favor of it and think it's a smart thing to do, smart guidelines to prevent the spread of this deadly disease. And I wanted to follow up on Councilmember Rallo's question regarding enforcement. Since we do have about eight days of the requirement within the city limits regarding the restaurants and bars and the gathering sizes, that your executive order has put those into place starting tomorrow and the county not until July 31st. So I'm just wondering, will there be an enforcement phone number or other mechanisms for the city government to enforce those rules prior to the county government stepping online with the same rules?
Yes, and I, as I had my video off, I saw, which y'all get to stare at my name, but maybe that was better anyway, but here's my face. Sorry. Yes, we, we, you know, I'll say, look, I, I have strongly urged that we walk hand in hand with the county through this and have done that generally, and I was, I was not eager to accelerate these dates, but I just couldn't justify not accelerating some of these dates, given what I felt was the, the threat and also the evidence that we've seen from around the country that a difference of a week can make a real difference in the curve. So I did want to accelerate them. It does mean we will need to stand up some enforcement in an eight-day period. We, we're, we've done that quickly. We will have a phone number. I don't think I'm going to release it right at this moment because I want to double-check it. People certainly for, as they have and do for private events, noise complaints, others can call the police number, a non-emergency number, or 911 to report those. Typically, in the spring, as that happened, those were referred to IUPD, which could respond quickly in, in areas near the campus and worked very closely with Bloomington Police Department. In terms of reaching out to other institutions, you know, we're looking at using a variety of folks in city government to help assure the, let's be frank, probably a few dozen institutions that may be the biggest risk of, of major super-spreader events that we're going to try to pay attention to. And I think a number of them actually aren't going to be open in this period. They're trying to figure out how to manage their business, and we understand that's a cost. But we also understand it's a cost that can help the community weather this really significant challenge in the, in the weeks ahead of us. But we're working closely with the county on enforcement. We'll continue to do that. But I just felt it was important that we make clear, we didn't want to wait to put these measures in place in the city.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. Thank you for that report, Mayor Hamilton, and I too support it wholeheartedly. From your perspective or position of our approach of being educational initially, and I know that the goal or the desire is not for enforcement, but we all do know that if you're going to have a mandate, if you will, there has to be consequences for non-compliance. Having said that, I'd much rather use the word compliance as opposed to enforcement. But to get to my question, as part of the education, are there any plans from the city and possibly even with the county as part of the education? And I know this will be very, very hard in social gathering situations, if that's the issue. But are we prepared to, as part of the education, provide masks to complaints that we respond to as part of the education? Has that been discussed?
Yes, thank you. There's a lot of plans to make masks available to people. I think the order from the county, which is in place through the whole county now, made clear that it is an individual responsibility to provide your own mask. But if you cannot or have issues doing it for cost or, or access or other things, there are thousands of masks that we are assembling, and I'll thank the county emergency management and others who've helped do that, plus a ton of volunteers in the community who are, who are making those, that will be made available. They're, they're available at every fire station in the city and other locations around the county, and we'll continue to do that. We will have individuals who have them available. When you mentioned a party, I, I'm trying to imagine a, an officer showing up at a party with a, with a handful of 50 masks and saying, y'all, put them on, and then you can keep going, my guess, which is possible. But, but my guess is most of those engagements will be, be asking, how do you show me that you are keeping six feet distance if you're not all members of a single family? If you can't, you really can't be in this circumstance because the risks are too high. IU is going to do a lot to try to educate the importance of this to their students to understand. If you can't, if you can't do it, then the, the university's not going to be able to keep on-campus learning going on. But it's going to be a challenge, and we all need to be educators on this, too, I think, and try to share that message.
And thank you for the comment. I'd like to make clear, I think, in my question somewhere in there, I talked about social gatherings, and I understand the difficulty in enforcing or asking for a compliance there. That, that would be a little different situation, but more of an educational, when we get individual complaints or some sort of confrontation that would more involve individuals from an education standpoint. So thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilmember Sims. Further questions from my colleagues? If not, I have one. Mr. Mayor, thank you for the order, and I want to thank the sponsors, councilmembers Sandberg and Piedmont Smith, for this resolution. One question that has come up is, does the city need to implement new ordinance towards our health goals? I mean, the council stands by, ready to develop such legislation, but I think my question to you is, what do you foresee asking us for in the weeks to come with respect to maintaining public health?
Well, I think we were ready to ask for an ordinance to kind of put some more weight behind the order. But because we believe the order will basically lapse of its own terms as the county order comes into effect on the 31st, I don't think there's a need for council action on that, assuming the county proceeds, as we expect they will in this way. I, I think, I think what I would say about that more generally is that we do need to remember that Indiana is something like 49th out of 51 jurisdictions in terms of per capita investment in the public health system in our state. It shows the lack of testing, the lack of resources, and this is not for the heroic efforts of the individuals who are part of that public health system, but it's a, just a woefully underfunded public health system that, at the county level, it may be worth thinking about local funding to enhance our county health system. But I do think it's at the county level that that infrastructure is designed and, and can be funded. If that changes or there are particular needs, we are looking at that. We, last little point I'll make about that is there are some federal funds, CARES Act funds that are allocated to the city that we could use, for example, for compliance employment related to these issues over the next few weeks, and we are looking at that. We just want to be sure we can get reimbursed under the COVID rules for people that, and money that we might spend on that. So that could be done locally. But I'm, I'm not sure that that takes council action. I think that CARES Act appropriations are there. But I'm, I'll, I'll be cautious about that. I'm not certain about that.
Sure. Well, it does sound to me like, if anything, the action that council might need to take would not be ordinance, but rather an appropriation ordinance. That's, that's the more likely scenario if there's anything that you need us to do. Is that a safe thing to say?
I, I think that's right, though. I'll also be, look, stuff moves fast. We didn't expect six months ago, so I don't know if there may be things that we need to do over the next few months. You know, we, our community could change a whole lot in the next four to eight weeks, depending upon. So, you know, we gotta, we gotta be ready. So don't hold me to saying we don't need anything, but I don't know the plan.
No, no, just, just trying to plan legislatively to anticipate what kind of legislation we may need to be considering. But thank you for those answers. I appreciate it. Are there any other questions for either the mayor or for the makers of, the sponsors of Resolution 2011? I see a question from Councilmember Piedmont Smith, a sponsor.
Yes, I was wondering if the mayor could just speak to the role of Bloomington Police Department in encouraging people to wear masks and educating people about the new rules.
Well, I think they, you know, to the extent, to the extent that they're interacting generally with the public, I think they can be helpful in that. As you might imagine, we, we and the Bloomington Police Department are sensitive about excessive engagement with, with the public in, in, in ways that, that aren't necessary to protect public safety. They are not the health officers of our community. But in particular, I think that Police Department, along with IU Police Department, you will see most active in social gathering settings where they're brought in to help deal with a private home or a Greek house or a gathering that, that is in a, in a, a social gathering that has exceeded the limits or appears to be, and based on complaints or other indicators are going to show up at those places. I think that's the most likely place. I hope they'll be able to carry masks themselves to offer. But, but most of this compliance, I think, is really going to come from proprietors of restaurants and bars and shops and schools and, and universities and, and all those kinds of settings will be where we'll have the much more common interaction with the public on masks.
Does that complete your question, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions on Resolution 2011? Seeing none, we'll go to the public for comment on Resolution 2011. If you would like to speak to this resolution, please raise your hand in Zoom or type into the chat and let Mr. Lucas identify you. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to Resolution 2011? As I see a thumb up instead of a hand raise, I'm not sure if that's what that person was trying to do. Mr. Lucas, do you see any? There we go.
Yes. Vladimir, I believe, should be unmuted and ready to comment.
Please go ahead. Please. Sir, we cannot understand you. I'm not sure anybody listening understands what I believe you're speaking is Russian. Do you have anything to say, Resolution 2011? Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else like to speak to Resolution 2011? Please raise your hand in Zoom or type into the chat. Mr. Lucas, do we have any takers?
See no more requests.
Thank you. We'll come back to the council for debates. Is there any final comment on Resolution 2011, Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. As one of the co-sponsors, this is one of many issues that we received a lot of very thoughtful comments from the public about, including a good number of emails that we all probably received from people saying, please don't mandate wearing of masks. But I will have to say, the vast majority of people were very eager for the city of Bloomington to join with the county efforts, and we were very grateful for the county efforts to get this mandated due to the fact that we are going to be at some risk as students return to the community, and we need to be far ahead of this. And so I, I look at this, for all those who feel this is a, an encroachment on their personal freedoms, that there is a social contract that we all need to sign on to. And we all want to get back out there. We all want to have large gatherings. I sorely miss performing arts and the ability to go see live theater and concerts and go to a movie. We all want to get back to some semblance of social contact and connection. It's been hard on, on us all, but I will say, the sooner we get a handle on this virus, the sooner our economy can open back up, our restaurants can open back up, we can have that connection that we, we all enjoy. But it's a matter of discipline for me, and I know a lot of the conversations that I was hearing from our community that said, oh, my gosh, you've got to mandate these. I'm going to stores, and I see there are not enough people wearing them. I'm at risk, and I don't want to bring this home to my family. And we all just have to understand, it's going to be uncomfortable for a while longer. But if we want this community to open up and open up wide, this is a necessary step. The enforcement of it, again, is less important to me as just community awareness, continuing the education, help people who need masks, get masks. I don't want this to be punitive in, in any manner. And I appreciate Councilmember Sims for saying this. It's a matter of... And I appreciate Councilmember Sims for saying this is a matter of compliance. It may take some time to get everybody on board here, and that's to be expected. But the more people who wear masks, the more protected we all are, even if we can't get to 100% compliance here. But I do want to thank the governor today because his his message today will be usually helpful to Monroe County and to Bloomington in making sure that we do get to really solid compliance on this. It is so essential that we protect our elderly, that we protect our people at risk, that we don't see a spread because of the school systems opening up and and bars are kind of super spreader opportunities. And so anything that we can do to make sure that things don't spin out of control here, I hope everybody will agree this is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Hamilton, for taking this step. Of course, it's not necessarily easy because there are going to be people who won't comply or object, and that's a shame. It's very heartening to see that the governor has joined us, the county and the city now, in mandating masks. Every success story that I've seen regarding limiting the number of infections has involved wearing masks around the world. And it's it's demonstrated that it works. And as Councilmember Sandberg said, if we want to open the economy, which we sorely need to do, if we want to continue some semblance of normalcy, it's going to require some sacrifice, and that's wearing a mask is not that much of a sacrifice. I can I can't imagine. It it limits transmissibility, obviously. But the other aspect is is that if you if you are exposed, you're exposed to relatively few viral particles, which helps your body gives a time to mount a defense. And so it's it's very, very important, and I'm glad we're taking this step. So let's hope it works. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. Further comments on Resolution 2011? I see Councilmember Flaherty and Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. Similarly, I wanted to praise the action of both the county and Mayor Hamilton in executing these orders. That's actually news to me, Councilmember Rallo, about the Indiana order. I just Googled it and saw that that was announced, it looks like, today, which is good news as well. This will almost certainly save lives and help Bloomington to get back on track sooner. And I think it's really important to protect vulnerable members of our community, including workers at restaurants and shops and grocery stores who are exposed potentially to higher levels of risk. I think this, as as Councilmember Sandberg mentioned, you know, we've received a number of emails, some of which I'm still responding to, about concerns about, you know, impositions on personal liberties or freedom, but this is the challenging thing with American sort of individualism. They say you want a freedom to go without a mask, but also people need the freedom from being exposed to an undue level of risk. So this is kind of a freedom from issue, freedom from being subjected to this when we know what needs to be done for community health. I did want to bring up one other related issue to the to the orders, which is that in the context of restaurants and bars, you know, the need for outdoor seating and that being encouraged to help Bloomington get economically on track. We've, of course, had the trial program, which I think is going fairly well on Kirkwood between Grant and Indiana so far. I think Thursday to Sunday, the restaurants are able to use the street for for outdoor seating, which I think not only is safer, just is safer, but also I think people are more comfortable with that, and it's more easy to comply with these orders and and keep people employed and that sort of thing. So I think it's really important to continue to look at those options. First, you know, perhaps we should consider expanding that that program, either more days or evenings, as well as other blocks, especially on Kirkwood, where we can do this very easily, given the new bollards with the redesign there. I know initially we had pursued an all-in sort of approach where unless every business on the street was was in support, we weren't willing to do it, but I think perhaps our metric there should be the greater good economically of the community and not necessarily basing things on a on a holdout. So I'm curious to pursue more options there. The second piece I wanted to mention is the idea of a parklit program in areas where it's less easy or less desirable to close lanes in a street. For those who aren't familiar with parklets, you could Google it, parklit outdoor dining. You'll see hundreds of examples from cities all over the country, all over the world, where parking spaces are used for outdoor dining. If you are a business and have two parking spaces in front on the street, we could grant you with a a permit for a six or nine or 12-month period to use those spaces for outdoor dining. It might allow you to have three or four extra tables. And there's some really creative uses of space that that I think helped to to make a community more vibrant and would really help in this time. It's something I think should exist even in the absence of COVID-19, and I've reached out to Economic and Sustainable Development staff about this a number of weeks ago and needed to follow up. But just wanted to mention in the context of this order that as we work to protect public safety and health, we want to make sure that that folks, that businesses can stay viable as well in the safest way possible, and I think this is a really important piece to that. So I just wanted to speak to that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Further comment on Resolution 2011, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I just wanted to thank the county for taking the first steps on this. Penny Cottle and Dr. Sharp for issuing the order last Friday. And I know that Margie Rice also worked hard on the legal aspects of it. And then the Board of Public Health, of course, gave their unanimous approval yesterday. So I want to thank them for all the work that they've done. The the county Public Health Office has been just under siege since the pandemic started, and I think they've done an excellent job in trying to educate the community and help facilitate testing and other and precautionary measures as well. So I wanted to thank them. I also, as previous colleagues, as colleagues have said, there have been many, many emails on this topic, and some of them have asked us not to pass a requirement for the wearing of masks, and I will echo what a previous colleague also said and and say this is the cost of being a member of society that I wear a mask to protect you and you have to wear a mask to protect me. If you don't bind to that social contract, then maybe you need to go and, you know, live in the woods and not have any contact with anybody. But living in a community and all the benefits that brings, I think we have to take the responsibility to protect each other, and it's, you know, been medically proven that masks do help a lot. So I hope we all keep that in mind and respect each other by wearing masks when we go out. So thank you. And I I hope that this passes unanimously.
Thank you. Is there any further comment on Resolution 2011? Going once, going twice. I'll simply chime in to say that.
Councilmember Sims.
Oh, Councilmember Sims, you're on page two of mine. Councilmember Sims, please go ahead.
No, I wanted to go last. No, I'm just joking. No, 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 Steve. I do have one brief comment. Another component, and we talked about a lot of things, but one of the components of this issue is racial justice or social justice. Many, many years ago, cancer, we were talking about cancer, and people would say, you know, it was only a matter of time before you were affected. You would either know someone or someone in your family would be affected by that, and I think that's come true. I think it's pretty similar from a seriousness standpoint that we could say the same thing as we move forward with COVID. And and it forms the way we think from a social, as we say, social contract standpoint. Personally, I married into a family over 40 years ago, and one of my best friends was someone that was in that family. Unfortunately, he contracted COVID, and at the age of 68, we had his funeral about five weeks ago. This is very, very, and he's African-American, and we know that the numbers are disparate on how it affects our population, not the total numbers. But as they are based on population, the numbers are very disparate or desperate for our population. So I am also very, very happy to see, among other reasons, that we are enacting this this order. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other last minute comments before I jump in? I just want to say that since the order has been enforced, I've seen a dramatic increase in compliance around the city the few times that I have been out, and I am grateful for it. And I think it also demonstrates that such orders work. It's it's not as, you know, we're not at 100%, but as much better it was before, and in particular, what I noticed were retailers with a sign saying mask required, and then in Sharpie underneath, they wrote by county ordinance. And I know that the ability to say it's not just us saying it, the law is telling us to do it, that that makes the difference and that this is why it's so important for us to to lead. So I want to commend the county commissioners and the county health department for for bringing an order forward. I want to commend the mayor and the administration for implementing it sooner than the county would have. I think it's a small point, but I think the mayor's point about you know, how quickly the virus can spread is is too important to ignore. So the fact that it will be enforced in restaurants and bars sooner than in the rest of the county, I think, considering our density, that's important and necessary. So with that, it's time to call the roll on Resolution 2011. Will the clerk please call the roll? Yeah, unmute. We can't hear you.
Sorry about that.
Can she unmute herself?
I did. Councilmember Rosenbarger? Yes. Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
And Councilmember Scambolari?
That is a nine zero vote. Resolution 2011 is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the sponsors. We now go to resolutions for first or to legislation for first reading. Councilmember Sandberg, did you have something?
Yes, Mr. President, I might need some guidance from our attorney or a parliamentarian that I would like to make a motion regarding the appropriation ordinance 20-03.
It it needs to be introduced first, so let's introduce it.
And then after the introduction, then it's appropriate.
That's fine. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Will the parliamentarian please proceed?
Yes, sorry. Mr. President, I move that appropriation ordinance 2003 by be introduced and read by title and synopsis only by the clerk?
Second.
There's a motion to second. Will the clerk please call the roll on the introduction of the ordinance?
Yes, Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambolari?
Yes.
And Sims? Oh, Rosenbarger, sorry.
Okay, yes.
So nice. I thought you'd do it twice.
Hey.
Introduce. All right, so I decided last week to forward this legislation to the Sustainable Development Committee, which is scheduled to meet immediately after this meeting. Councilmember Sandberg, give a motion.
Yes, I would like to move that appropriation ordinance 20-03 be heard by the entire committee of the whole. And my thinking on that is.
Wait, you need a second, and then you can explain.
Second.
Give a motion to second. Councilmember Sandberg, please proceed.
Thank you. My thinking on this is this does involve a lot of information. And as a member of the committee that you have appointed to hear this, I just feel very strongly that because this does involve a large amount of money that I would like to frankly hear from the rest of the my colleagues on the council with respect to everything that we're going to hear tonight regarding this proposal. So that is why I am recommending that all nine of us stick around to hear this this evening. If it needs to be broken down further after the fact, that could be another matter. But for tonight, I just think it's very important that that all nine of us have the opportunity to listen, ask questions, and then that will form perhaps more direction going forward. Thank you.
So any discussion of Councilmember Sandberg's motion, Councilmember Flaherty? Or questions, rather?
Yeah, as the question, as a procedural matter, would we still be able to meet as committee of the whole tonight in the time where the Sustainable Development Committee was scheduled, or would we need to postpone this to another week to notice the meeting?
That is a question I don't know how to answer. I think that perhaps Mr. Lucas or Mr. Sherman, if he's on, might be able to answer. It can we get a legal reading on this?
I I can jump in. We did post notice and draft the agendas to leave open the possibility that the council might refer this and also Resolution 2012. That's sort of a companion piece of legislation that is currently slated for the Sustainable Development Committee meeting. We left open the possibility that the the council could decide what committee to send these to. So we communicated that possibility to the public. I believe we've complied with the open door law by making the meeting known. Either way, it's a public meeting. It's open to the public to attend and observe, so that's what we've done.
Thank you.
Further questions on the motion? I would like to, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, go ahead.
Oh, it it's it's a comment, not a question. Sorry.
Okay. Well, we can go into comments unless there's more questions.
Councilmember Sims.
Councilmember Sims.
Councilmember Sims, I'm sorry. Please go ahead.
No, mine was a comment as well. I'll follow Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Okay. Well, I would like to reply to the motion. So the this is I can understand why. I mean, I've been told that this legislation touches on several different committees. In theory, it could have been referred to any one of several committees. I felt that Sustainable Development Committee, since this is largely about economic recovery. I will point out that appropriation ordinance have to be advertised. And so it was advertised for August 12th. No matter what decision is made tonight, there will need to be a second reading no earlier than August 12th, or rather, there will need to be a third reading if a second reading is held on the 29th. Secondly, the members of the Sustainable Development Committee were asked by the chair to submit questions by Monday in order to give staff a chance to prepare. While that, while they only they were asked because they're on the committee, no one is precluded from asking those questions or of asking members of the committee to ask questions. The the committee process naturally allows two hearings of the legislation. One of them will be tonight. The second would be August the 5th. And as always, as with every standing committee, any member is welcome to stay and attend the meeting. The goal of the committee process, among other things, is to minimize the amount of clock time that we need to spend on it. The the goal tonight of the committee should be to set up questions that they may have that require research or to set up the potential for amendments that have that require research or to set up the potential for amendments that, that a member may choose to bring. Those amendments are not limited to the committee members. So the goal is to compact the meeting, among other things. So I don't think it's necessary here. I'd strongly urge my colleagues to allow it to go to sustainable development. Finally, I'll point out that we have no rules limiting time in committee of the whole, whereas the Sustainable Development Committee has an hour to meet tonight before transportation is to meet. So I don't think that needs to change. I would ask you to defeat the motion. Thank you. With that, I'll entertain debate. Councilmember Piedmont Smith, followed by Councilmember Sims.
Yes, I wanted to say that I, I am not a member of the Economic or the Sustainable Development Committee, but Councilmember Scambleri, who is the chair of that committee, did send out an email, I think on Friday, asking not just committee members, but any council members to send her questions in preparation for tonight's meeting. And I read the legislation and I sent her my questions and she replied that, you know, those would be sent on to staff and would be addressed during the meeting tonight. So I don't feel left out at all. I, I was planning to attend the meeting tonight, but not visibly so that I could eat dinner. I also, I am on the Transportation Committee meeting that was supposed to, is supposed to be at nine o'clock tonight. If there's a committee of the whole and it goes long, I don't know when Transportation Committee is going to meet, and I think nine o'clock is already a pretty late start time. The other benefit I see to maintaining the delegation of this legislation to the Sustainable Development Committee is that, as President Volin mentioned, standing committees automatically have two meetings in which to discuss legislation and a committee of the whole does not. So I think with such a large appropriation ordinance with so many different parts affecting so many different funds in our budget, I think it is wise to take two committee meeting dates to consider the legislation. So I'll be voting against the motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Sims?
Earlier in the year, there was an appropriation ordinance, and I think there was a comment by one of my colleagues that their desire in the future was to divide the question. I still don't understand why. I don't know if they just didn't agree with that particular app or, but the same person, now that we've moved forward, has now supporting that. And I don't hear any mention of dividing the question. That's my comment. What I also am concerned about, one is the amount of funds that we're talking. But in my mind, that's something that's even broader than that is, and I hope I'm not terribly incorrect here, but it looks like this app or could be referred to any one of one, two, three, four, four standing committees and five, if you add the Jack Hopkins Committee. So it's like we just crammed all of these into one area. I, I understand the urgency, but also understand the process is that we can still deal with this. With the amount that we're talking about, it just seems better that it's heard by nine members as opposed to four. And that's my hesitation on this ordinance. And I will vote to support the motion.
Further comment on the motion? Councilmember Flaherty?
I actually ask another question. Another procedural question, which is if committee of the whole heard this tonight, procedurally, what would we need to do to send this to a second committee meeting? I think based on the questions that were submitted by both Sustainable Development Committee members and other council members, it, it might be advantageous to have another committee meeting before the second regular session where we would vote on this. That is, of course, one of the advantages of committees, standing committees, is that the kind of normal process is two meetings. So, and of course, Councilmember Volin, you spoke to that. But my question, yeah, is really if we decided after tonight's committee of the whole meeting, if that happened, and we wanted to have another committee meeting, what, what would that look like procedurally? Is that?
Well, procedurally, it would mean that the committee of the whole does not extend itself. So the committee would have to make a recommendation to the council, the committee of the whole would have to recommend a condition to itself, that we then take up at second reading on July 29th. And then we would have to recommit to a committee of the whole on August the 5th and then have a third reading on August the 12th. My response to that would be, this is why I've never understood committee of the whole. If the council really wanted everyone to speak on every issue, we shouldn't refer it to committee at all. We should simply take it up at second reading and then require a third reading because the same thing is effective. But at least if you, if the whole council takes it up during a regular session, it all gets recorded. So I, I find the committee of the whole to be frankly pointless in this case, that for the, the way the schedule is set up, the obligation we had to advertise it for August 12th, we might as well simply not send it to committee at all, have it taken up at second reading next week. But the schedule's already filling up. We have time to talk about it tonight. And again, well, I'll leave, I'll leave the rest for my own comments at the end of the motion. Hope that answers your question.
It does. Thanks.
Thank you. Is, are there further questions or comments on the motion? Councilmember Smith?
I think the, because it's so broad, that is why I, I think it probably should go to committee of the whole. And a secondary thought in my mind is that in transparency and for the public, it seems like it's much easier when something so broad is discussed at large with the nine of us here. And so that, that's my thoughts on it. And thank you.
Thank you. Any other first round comments on resolution or appropriation ordinance 2003? Councilmember Scambleri?
Yes, thank you. Speaking for myself, not speaking as chair of Sustainable Development right now, I honestly don't have a strong preference for whether this goes to Sustainable Development or to committee of the whole. But several things caused me to want to err in the direction of committee of the whole. One, it's an app board. There is money changing hands. There's money, public monies that are going to be spent. It is a multi-dimensional appropriation ordinance. And as people have observed, it can go to multiple committees. We've talked about the, the hope, not necessarily the goal, but the hope of minimizing clock time. And it seems to me that with all nine of us in the same room at the same time, we could cover a lot of ground quickly tonight. We could ask those staff to only have to present once and we could move forward. So I, I, again, I don't personally have a preference, but if I have colleagues who feel like they would like to be part of the conversation, then I think it makes sense to support a move to committee of the whole. And in which case, we would need to find someone to chair that tonight. And that's where I am. So, thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yeah, I did have a procedural question that if this were to pass, you know, committee of the whole is chaired on a rotational basis in alphabetical order. But since Chair Scambleri was going to be prepared to chair it, if it had gone to the, the standing committee, I would want a ruling from, I guess, our council attorney about who would be chairing the meeting tonight, should this motion pass?
Mr. Lucas, do you know?
Sure. I, I believe Ron is, sorry, Councilmember Smith is up next in the rotation for the committee of the whole. Member is not obligated to serve as chair, though I did speak briefly to him about this possibility before the meeting, and I think he's prepared to do so. And I'll, I'll defer to him. And I did want to, if I could, go back to Councilmember Flaherty's question about the possibility of two committee of the whole meetings. Councilmember Volin correctly pointed out one option for giving the council that ability. Under our local code, the president also has the authority when an ordinance is first introduced for first reading to announce that it will be considered at the next two committee of the whole meetings scheduled. So I would suggest if that's the council's intent, and if this motion prevails, that if the president wants to, he could announce that the council intends to consider this on at tonight's meeting and then also on the committee meeting for August the 5th.
Wait, say that last, say that last sentence again, please.
The president can announce, if, if this motion passes, you may want to consider announcing that the council will take up, that the committee of the whole will consider this item at tonight's meeting and the meeting on August the 5th.
Thank you. Understood.
That will take away the, the need to have it re-referred back to the committee next week.
Councilmember Sandberg, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other, any other debate on the motion? Anyone who has not yet spoken? If not, I'd like to have my chance to speak as to why I oppose the motion. The, of all the other cities in the state, which all use committees, the number one committee in the state is a finance or a budget committee. The idea that somehow, you know, budgets must be heard in committee of the whole is a concession I made in the development of the committee resolution using existing code that deferred to our habit of having a budget week, where in August, we take up the budget. But, you know, as important this legislation is, there is no compelling reason. I mean, the, the whole committee system encourages members to actually serve staff by sending questions in advance. I see that some members didn't do that. That the, again, as I've explained, the committee of the whole is unnecessary if you simply, I mean, it's, it's as if you're not sending it to committee at all. With this logic, we should just be going to a third reading. We have, we actually have the discussion at second reading, which would happen during a regular session, and we should have the benefit of having minutes taken and it being official. And then we have a third reading. So I don't see the utility in committee of the whole. I'm very disappointed that my colleagues are not trying to let this system work. I was assured six months ago that, that they would try to make it work. And that, again, as important as this is, the, I'm not here just to minimize clock time, not proposing that it go to committee. It's to spread deliberation over an amount of time that should be necessary for something this important. And the, the rule that Mr. Lucas just cited was created in 2013 as a compromise and afterthought. You know, it is my opinion that the committee of the whole is a very poor structure, was never meant to be used in the way that the city of Wilmington uses it, and we should not be using it tonight either. So I will oppose the motion. We now go to a second round of discussion. Councilmember Sims, you had your hand up.
My comment is regardless of how this motion prevails, ultimately, I have full intentions of supporting this appro, this app or appropriation or appropriation ordinance. But, and I've stated some of my reasons why. But the, what I want to make clear is this has absolutely no negative reflection or connotations on Chair Scambleri. I think she did everything from that position in a stellar and yeoman's job, as a matter of fact, of trying to handle something that frankly, I'm not so sure she should have been asked to handle with the, the many, the different standing committees that this all has a part of and could have referred to, as you said, any one of them. So that's just my position. And that's my comment. Thank you.
Second round comments. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
I have a question. I know we've talked about it a little bit, but what will happen to Transportation Committee? Will we just push it to a different night? I think, does it have to start before 9:45 or something? I just doubt that we'll get, if there are nine of us speaking, we don't tend to wrap a meeting up anytime before two hours, especially with a presentation.
I would turn that question to the chair of the would be standing committee or the would be committee of the whole, Councilmember Smith, whether he would commit to bringing the, the committee of the whole in before nine o'clock so that transportation could begin on time.
If, if I understand it, if we all agree to end debate in time to begin the Transportation Committee, we can do that as, because we have another meeting, at least one more meeting that we can discuss it. Is that correct?
No, the, it's, it's entirely in your hands as chair to decide how much time will be allotted for people to speak, how long the meeting will last. That's something you have to, that's what the chair of any committee is obligated to do.
I, I would be committed to finish the first round of discussion on, on this ordinance by nine o'clock.
Councilmember Rosenbarger, does that answer your question?
Yeah, thanks.
Further questions or comments from colleagues? Second round. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, thank you. I'm actually somewhat agnostic to this motion. I, I tend to favor the committee structure. I think there's advantages to it. That said, I, I share some of the sentiments shared by, I share some of the sentiments shared by Councilmember Scambleri about, you know, if there's a number of councilmembers who really want to hear this, I'm sort of okay with that. And if we do adopt this motion, I would encourage Council President Volin to go ahead and designate that we will be meeting two committee meetings. In particular, if we wrap up committee of the whole tonight before nine, I think we will need two committee meetings before I'm comfortable making a recommendation to the full council about what we should do with this app board. And, and I'll speak very briefly to, to the issue of dividing the question. I don't think Councilmember Sims's comments were directed at me specifically, but I am the, the council member who brought up dividing the question on, on an app board previously. I don't, it's, it's this kind of challenge of, I mean, you could say the same thing actually of Title 15 updates that are coming to Transportation Committee later tonight, that is some, it is somewhat omnibus in, in nature, that there was a whole lot going on here. And if you oppose a small part, it's difficult to, to know how to vote. So that was my reason in the past for trying to divide the question on an app board, was that I supported two parts of it, but not a third part, and would like to have voted my conscience on all of those independently. Just because we weren't allowed to debate that at the time, I'll clarify now that if any colleague of mine at any point on any ordinance wants to divide the questions, they can vote differently on different parts, regardless of how I feel about the legislation. I would support that. I think it's, it's a helpful thing to do. So I don't, I don't think that necessarily means that every app board needs to be divided or that this one does. But if, if people want to, if the council members want to, I would support that in the future. So I thought I would mention that as well. That's it for my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg and Councilmember Sims?
Just to wrap up my, my motion and my rationale for it, I think this is so critically important. And it, because I've heard a lot of constituent concerns about it, these are finances, that I absolutely think we should have two committee of the wholes to discuss it. Tonight should be an absorbing meeting. We've already had a work session on it. We've already heard the mayor's announcement about it. But that has caused quite a bit of constituent concern that I'd like tonight's discussion, and all nine of us being a part of that, to address initially. If it needs further scrutiny, we can deal with that later. But if the second committee of the whole is needed to deal with the complexity of this and the assurance the public needs about this and being the right thing to do with the amount of money that's on the table here, that's why I think it's important to go to the committee of the whole. And I hope I will get support for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Sims?
I just wanted to, in response to Councilmember Flaherty, I speak in broad terms, things that have been said his, over the course of this 2029 or 2020. I will state that my comment had absolutely nothing to do with your your proposal to divide the question and was not directed at you. Just want to make that clear.
Thank you. Further comments? Councilmember Scambalary.
Thank you. First of all, Councilmember Sims, thank you for your kind words that I hadn't missed anything. I was feeling vulnerable and insecure. So thank you for that. This is an app board. We treat, we number these differently. We treat these differently. I'm generally a fan of the committee structure. And I think it has proven useful tool at many points this year during this very bizarre year. App boards feel, app boards and app boards worth $2 million feel different to me. I would not have, and again, I would have chaired tonight's meeting. I have no objection to going to committee of the whole on this, particularly since several colleagues have felt so passionately about it. And I would encourage us to do so quickly so we could get to work tonight.
Further comments on second round comments? If not, I'll simply say what I have not heard in any of the discussion about committees is a defense of the committee of the whole, of the logic behind the committee of the whole. Again, nothing that could be done in committee of the whole that can't be done in a regular session. It's a meeting of all nine members. Colleagues who are so enthusiastic about it have yet to explain to me what the actual benefits of the committee of the whole are over a regular session such as we're in right now. There are greater benefits to taking up issues in a second and a third reading, something that many cities do. They do third and even fourth readings. I don't know why we're so afraid of that, except that it's habit that we just, we've been coasting on, we've been doing it this way for so long. But, you know, for all the reasons that caused me to propose a committee structure in the first place, I don't think this is a benefit. I question frankly whether we should be doing budget week, that if anything, there should be a finance or budget committee and they should be working all year as so many of our other cities do, it being the number one type of committee in other cities to help formulate the budget all year round instead of simply deferring to and waiting for departments to develop their budgets. They should be doing that with input from council members. I did not think that this was the year to do that. I thought first we need to try other kinds of committees. So, I mean, it is ultimately the will of the council to decide how to dispose of something. I have no problem with going to two committees of the whole, if that means that there will be better deliberation on it. But the council has to realize that it's time to start setting more rules for time limits, more rules for conduct during committee of the whole. And again, the more you look at it, the more you're going to find that we already have all those rules and they exist in regular session. So I would urge you all to reconsider in general, your understanding of committee of the whole. I would urge you to go back to Roberts and read what it's actually supposed to be for. It's meant to be for much larger assemblies. It's never been meant to be used the way we've used it. And I'm just disappointed in this. I would, I fervently believe that the Sustainable Development Committee would have done an excellent job of asking questions, setting up the questions for council at second reading on August the 12th. And I lost a chain of thought. And, you know, asking questions on behalf of other members who weren't there. That's also the logic behind why, when staff asked us to submit questions before first committee hearing so they could prepare for it, that's something we've never done in committee of the whole. And, you know, if people are concerned about the extra work that committees cause, that's why we ask a subset of members to do it so it doesn't create more work for everybody. So there was a logic to this that's been thought out. And I would urge my colleagues to reconsider over the, the next few weeks, their understanding of how committees are supposed to work. With that, I will, if this motion passes, I will announce that there will be two committees of the whole on, tonight and on August the 5th. With that, if there's no objection, I will have the clerk call the role in the motion. Is there any objection? Will the clerk please call the role in the motion to refer to committee of the whole?
Councilmember Volin?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
No.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambalary?
Yeah.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Sorry, yes.
We wrote, our vote is seven to two, the motion passes. The committee of the whole will be chaired by Councilmember Smith. I believe that council members, I'm not sure who will, who would be the next council member who would be committee of the whole chair on August 5th, Mr. Lucas? Would it be Councilmember Flaherty?
It goes in alphabetical order and there's a lot of S's, so you'd have to give me a second.
I know, I'm trying to track them all. So I think it's, because I, I'm already president, so I don't serve as chair of committee of the whole. I think the next, so the committee tonight will be chaired by Councilmember Smith. Committee on the 5th will be chaired by Councilmember Flaherty. And with that, I think that we need to go to the next item for first reading, Councilmember.
Before you do that, I did want to, I guess, bring up Resolution 2012 again. I don't believe that was part of the motion. But that resolution accompanies the app board and, again, as president, he, Councilmember Volin made a preliminary referral of that to the Sustainable Development Committee.
I'll withdraw it and with, and refer it to committee of the whole tonight and on August the 5th, although I don't think we're needed to talk about it until August the 5th. So it doesn't need to be introduced tonight either. But I intend to refer it to committee of the whole.
Thank you.
Does that satisfy your concern?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Will the parliamentarian please continue with first readings?
Sorry. Mr. President, I move ordinance 20-12 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only by the clerk.
A motion is second. Can we have a vote on the motion to introduce? Madam Clerk?
Yes. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambalary?
Yeah.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
And Volin?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis only?
Yep. Okay. Ordnance 2012 to amend Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic, relating, regarding amending Titles 1512010 Stop Intersections, 1524010 Increased or Decreased Speed Limits, and 15410 Locations to Change Trade Street and Trade Street to Make Her Way, 1232080 No Parking Zones to Add Several No Parking Zones, 1532090 Limited Parking Zones to Change Limited Parking Zone, and 1532100 Loading Zones to Add a Loading Zone, and 1532186 Motorcycle Parking Restrictions to Add Parking Restrictions for Motorcycles and Mopeds, and 1536085 Reserved Residential On-Street Parking Permit to Add Temporary Visitor Parking Permit, and 1540019 to Add Garage Parking Space Reserved for Electric Vehicles, and 1540010 On-Street Metered Parking Locations and Maximum Hourly Rate to Add Three Locations, and 1524020 Increased or Decreased Speed Limits to Remove and Add Some Locations, and 1512010 Multi-Stop Intersections to Add and Change Some Locations, and 1512030 Signalized Intersections to Add One Location, and 1516010 One-Way Streets to Remove One Location. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends Title 15 Vehicles and Traffic of the Bloomington Municipal Code and comes forth at the request of city staff and the Traffic Commission. The ordinance makes the following changes. It changes all references to Trade Street or Trade Street to Make Her Way. It adds no new parking zones in several areas, including the following. On Grant Street between 18th and 19th, on 18th Street between Grant and Lincoln, on 15th Street near Indiana, first on Howe Street between Patterson Street and Ronson Street, second on Smith Avenue between Rogers Street and Jackson Street, and on Washington Street between 19th and 20th. It also limits parking on one side of some streets in the parking zone six at areas that cannot support parking on both sides of the street. It amends current limited parking zones on Rogers Street between 10th Street and 11th Street from the west side of Rogers to the east side of Rogers. It creates several new loading zones. It prohibits motorcycles and mopeds from parking in areas intended for bicycles. It allows only electric vehicles to park in city garage spaces designated for electric vehicles. It creates a new temporary visitor parking permit program for on-street parking in residential neighborhood parking zones. It adds a new pay-by-phone zone via pay-by-mobile app Park Mobile in three block spaces. It adds and changes the multi-stop intersections in some locations. It adds on-street metered parking in three locations. It adds and changes the multi-stop intersections in some locations. It adds one signalized intersection. It removes one-way streets in one location. It also removes redundancies created when ordinance 1826 added codifications without deleting if necessary. I think that's everything.
Thank you. With that, we go to matters of council schedule. Mr. Lucas, do we have any items for concern?
What about public comment?
Public, oh, there is a second round of public comment. My apology, is there anyone who would like to speak to an item who was attending from the public that has not been on tonight's agenda? If so, it was not already spoken, please raise your hand in Zoom or type into the chat so that Mr. Lucas can recognize you. Mr. Lucas, do you see anyone who would like to speak?
I do not.
All right. We'll now go to matters of council schedule. Do we have any upcoming meetings to know about, Mr. Lucas?
Just the council work session this Friday. There are two items that may be ready for the council to hear about. The first is an additional Title 15 ordinance that deals with parking along Seventh Street. The second item is a PUD that came forward from the Plan Commission that deals with a proposal from Habitat for Humanity to update an existing PUD. Both of those items will be released in the packet this week, but there's also an opportunity at the noon work session to hear about those. So if members could possibly indicate whether they intend to attend this Friday, that might give us a, a good sense of whether we need the work session or not.
Can we see a simple show of hands of people who are interested in attending the work session on Friday? I see five, I see most people, so I think we will have that work session after all. Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Anything else?
No, that's it. Obviously, we've got two committee meetings scheduled tonight as well, so.
Please do. Once again, I, yeah, well, we're gonna take a couple of minutes to change roles. I'll talk with Councilmember Smith. And so please, everyone come back in about two minutes after we adjourn and we'll have the committee of the whole on appropriation ordinance 2003. With that, is there any objection to adjournment? If not, we are adjourned. We'll reconvene at 10 minutes after eight. Thank you.
So we can get rolling. I think that do we need to have anything read about the ordinance or we're, we're good because we're in committee of the whole? So if I can ask the city staff if they'd like to comment on ordinance 2003, that would be appreciated. If the mayor would like to go ahead, please do so.
Thanks. Am I on unmute? I think I am.
Yes.
I'll try to be brief. I know we have a lot to do. Appreciate getting to this. This is all about Recover Forward. I, I made big remarks last week on the 16th and encourage everybody to look at that. I won't try to repeat that. I'll make very brief comments. Number one, I believe that government's role is to be countercyclical in down times, in challenging times, and I'm proposing that we do that explicitly to be an activist government that tries to help reduce damage, threats, cost, pain, suffering, and loss. Second, I tried to outline at that time, and we'll be happy to talk more about it, a fiscally responsible approach that identified reserves and belt trimming and management of finances to allow us to assemble $8 million that we can use toward Recover Forward, half of which will protect our basic services and another half of which, $4 million, can be dedicated to directly investing in improving our community's future. And that's what we're talking about tonight. That's the first half of that second $4 million. It's focused on meeting four goals. Pandemic recovery, economic recovery, racial justice, and climate justice. Recovering forward into those goals to help achieve those. This package that you have in front of you tonight seeks to move us forward on those four goals, together in particular in three buckets of activity where we can invest them in sustainable recovery focused on improving our efficiency and sustainability as a community and our equity in general. Also focus on jobs and recovery, in particular, trying to help our smaller businesses and employees, potential employees, get new jobs and good jobs. And third, continuing to invest in affordable housing to try to create that leg of our stool that helps build a strong community. I'll, I'll just mention, and I'm trying to keep it really short. So important to us, besides being countercyclical and fiscally responsible and focusing on those four goals, we're, don't duplicate things that are already out there. Try to partner with programs and opportunities that are available to us now. Because second, very important is that we're able to invest this in the next four months before the end of the year through, if you pass it in August, that we have September through December to help make this recovery happen. We've been doing a lot this year in the short term on emergency and some of this does also involve shorter-term efforts. But I will say, I believe this gets us on the longer-term road to recover forward toward what we want to see Bloomington be in this decade of the 2020s, that we line ourselves up with our values, that we invest in recovery that will help us do the right thing. So I'll ask you and I'll close. I hope you will support this. We welcome suggestions, comments, questions. We've gotten some of those. Speed is important in this because we do want to help the recovery sustain itself happen. So we strongly do encourage the vote by August 12th on this matter and thanks. I'd be happy to take questions and I have a number of colleagues who can get into the details with that. Thanks a lot, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor Hamilton. Is there any other city staff that wishes to present on 2003?
I think we're planning to respond to questions unless you want us to do more in each area. But I know how tight time is and, and if we would just move into questions.
No, no, that's, that's absolutely fine. Thank you very much. Council members, time for some questions. Councilmember Scambalary?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Hamilton, for this proposal. I was particularly pleased and interested to see that you referenced a special emphasis on the hard-to-employ, non-traditional and/or underrepresented individuals. I was wondering if you could say more about that in general. My, my husband, that's different for hand than it is economic development. But could you say more about that and what our specific strategies are to make sure we reach that goal? Because I think it's an important one.
Sure, and I'll, I'll probably ask Alex Crowley to step in in just a moment. Apart from doing things like some specific programs like Centerstone where we're working very closely with that ally. ally to move people directly into the workplace, and this would enhance that work. The investments of six figures in jobs would be really steered toward maximum effort and support to those small businesses, small nonprofits, other employers who are helping reach farther into the workplace to help people who have challenges for employment to get into employment. Coding school is designed for that, but also the direct support for new businesses would, for new jobs, would be higher per job when you're helping pull people into the workforce who are having difficulty in that workforce. And maybe I can hand it over to Alex to add a few details about that. Thanks.
Yeah, so there are, you know, there are different potential groups that would qualify with what Mayor Hamilton was talking about. You could have, you know, recently discharged veterans and having them kind of brought back into non-military life. You could have ex-offenders, also a group that has a lot of difficulty finding opportunities and job opportunities in particular. People who have been unemployed for a long period of time. Another group that also has difficulty going in into the workforce. And then, you know, you could look at possibly groups like recipients of public assistance. You know, a lot of the literature recently and also long-term literature points to opportunities being harder to access at the lower-income bands, so we would certainly look at that group. Also, you know, groups, minority groups, and just making a very concerted effort to reach out to pockets of populations that are just, you know, not traditionally accessing opportunities as easily as others.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Other questions from council members? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. Mayor, and part of what you were talking about, you said that it was two parts, and the second part had to do with eight million dollars, four of which was to improve the community's future, and then four million to help with more with the recovery aspect immediately. Let's talk about that eight million. What can you share with us about that? And I'm assuming that is a taxpayer investment that we're talking about, and can you talk about a timeframe on that?
Sure, just very briefly, and I outlined this in some detail on the sixteenth, but as we, as I look at a countercyclical government, you and we have helped build up our reserves to a very healthy level right now, including the rainy day fund. And as we looked, this is a rainy day. It's appropriate to use those reserves to protect our government's services. And as we looked and set a goal to say, we want to end twenty twenty-two, that is, two and a half years from now, we think it's responsible to end with a twenty-five percent rainy day reserve level. That means having three months' worth of operating expenses, which is fifty percent higher than what the state recommends, but three months of operating expenses. If we look at that forecast over that period of time, we can identify eight million dollars of kind of surplus investments that will be available, both from reserves and from expected reversions. And we basically said about half of that we should reserve to just keep government operating, to make sure we don't need to do a layoff, to make sure we can meet our obligations with our employees, to make sure we can, even while we trim our sales where we need to, that we keep the basics of city government going, and that's four million of that. The other four million then, in my outline, is available for this kind of recover-forward investment. How do we do the things that will help our community climb out of this hole better, more toward the community that we want to be in those four goals that I set? So that eight million is tax money that is already expected to be coming in and reserves that we have amassed through the last several years dedicated toward these uses.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty? You're muted.
Thank you. Yes, first question is, so I'm looking to get some more detail on some of these expenditures and programs and just wanting to know a bit more. So the first question I had was probably for Mr. Crowley with Economic and Sustainable Development, specifically the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar sum you worked for subsidizing energy conservation investments in homes, apartments, and businesses. The memo from Mayor Hamilton notes that that is included but not limited to investments in insulation, solar panels, plumbing, and efficient appliances. So broadly, I support, you know, these types of investments. They will lower costs for, you know, lower-income folks and help reduce emissions at the same time. My question is really, is there a sense that, well, first, how will it be administered? Will this be income-qualified grants? Will it be, you know, partnering with agencies like SCAP that already do this, some of this type of work and administering federal programs? And second, is there an anticipated breakdown of emphasis between solar panels versus weatherization versus appliances, that sort of thing? Thank you.
Let me, and Alex is going to answer this, but I should have said at the beginning, by the way, we will, we've gotten some written questions. We're going to give written answers to those to y'all back, and if you have more, we're happy to continue to do that because I know we'll be pressed for time tonight, but thanks for keeping those coming, and we'll give you written answers too. Thanks.
Well, I'll try to break those questions down to the component parts. The first one you were asking about was the administration of the program. How, what kind of structures would it have? And, you know, the answer is yes to all of the above. So what we would like to be able to do is structure more generous support at the lower incomes of, or the lower ranges of income. So grants at the lowest range, maybe, maybe much more favorable loans at the middle range and perhaps slightly, you know, more typical loans at the higher range. So the idea is to try to meet the need and to take a look at what the income levels are of the people that are involved. And then I think your next question was about the breakdown between the different components, so roughly estimating how that might play itself out. It's a little hard to tell because I think one of the components of the program is going to be to require as a point of entry, an energy assessment of a given structure. And so what that will yield will actually help to determine what the, you know, what the need is and what the investment will help to support. Having said that, it's our preliminary guess that we probably will be spending much of the sum on weatherization, possibly some solar, but as you know, the best first step one can take is to create efficiency, and then only once that's been achieved to go into renewable energy. So we're thinking that, you know, between mostly weatherization, possibly some solar will take up the majority of the monies. But then looking at appliances and other kind of smaller retrofits, we can see that having, you know, some not small amount. And then finally, rental property enhancements that ultimately can trickle down to the, you know, to the beneficiary, trying to overcome the split incentive program that happens. So, you know, probably a third, a third, a third between those three broad categories is what we're guessing right now, but we'll really have to see once we go to market what it, how it ends up playing out, and we'll be tracking that closely.
And I would just add, we are, we are working with USCAP, and we'll continue to do their light heat program. We're trying to marry in with that. And I would just note, as you would well know, I think if you looked at the amazing siren work that they're doing, but you look at that map, it's not hitting the lower-income areas as well. Those are, you know, those are expensive systems. They're hard to get in place. So we would be trying to push this, use that map and say, where is it missing? Where do we need to go in the community where more of this needs to happen?
And to add to that, you know, one of the reasons for that, and I think it sort of was another question that was written down, is a lot of the previous work that's been done relied on self-financing by the person making the changes, right? And so if you were short on capital or didn't have access to it, you would be less likely to go solar, for example. So this is really a, you know, actually kind of a first when it comes to substantial investments by local government into some of these efficiencies.
Quick follow-up, Chair Smith, if that's okay, short and related.
Yes, yes, please do.
You'd mentioned potential for loans as well. It sounds like city staff will be administering this and maybe perhaps in partnership with CDFI Friendly Bloomington. Could you speak just briefly, Mr. Crowley, to how the loan element of this, we do sort of green loans or low-interest loans for this purpose?
Yeah, so absolutely, CDFI Friendly Bloomington. You know, if you look back at the work that was done recently for the Rapid Response Fund, which was a city-administered loan program, but but actually tight coordination with CDFI Friendly Bloomington, because in fact, there are resources out there. The whole point of CDFI Friendly Bloomington is to bring those to bear in addition to what we're doing locally. That's worked out pretty well, and CDFI Friendly Bloomington has uncovered great resources that help to augment, and in some places displace actually, some of the activities that we thought we would have to undertake. So we've had some experience with loan management recently and in the past too, but we see this playing itself out a lot like the Rapid Response Fund.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I just want to remind council that since we're going to have another session, these questions can be in a preliminary sense to gather information, and you may want to refine your questions and send them for the next time we discuss this. Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. I obviously have some procedural questions about the increase to the Jack Hopkins Fund and how that's going to be allocated, what the timeframe for that would be. But my first question is about the IT category, about the digital equity, thirty-five thousand dollars, I believe. If I could get a little bit more of an explanation as to what kind of a program that would look like and who that's targeted for, how will that be administered? Hi, Mr. Dietz.
Sure, and Rick, I know, will add this. You all know how important digital access has been to me for many years and how important we've seen it is to so many people now, and we did just complete a digital survey, digital access survey that is not yet released, but has helped inform us to think about, they are, there are real problems locally, and this is kind of a first down payment effort to address what are some real digital divide questions, and Rick, I'll let you add some specifics to that.
Thanks, Mayor. I think this is the first time I've had the opportunity to join the council like this, so it's good to see you all, albeit in your pixelated form. As John mentioned, this is an outgrowth of an effort that we've been working on for some time. We ran a survey earlier in the year right as, you know, the impact of COVID was being felt in the, in the community. We hadn't planned on that, but see that as being a pretty fortuitous to have this type of survey teed up at a time when there's a lot of, a lot of challenges in our community around, around access. So the, the goal of this proposed appropriation is to support a grant initiative that would partner with local not-for-profit organizations that provide, provide support in the areas that have been identified with gaps in, you know, our local digital equity environment. So a number of those that have emerged from this survey, and as John mentioned, will be will be providing this to you and the public shortly. But, you know, we, we found some things, some things that were surprising, some things that weren't. But around, you know, twelve percent of low-income respondents never interact with the internet. You know, we do have a homework gap, in particular in low-income households where children that are in the school system have, have challenges being able to do, do their homework. There's a number of issues that cross, cross sectors and are of our local residents where both, you know, low-income individuals and older individuals have cited, you know, that they have a gap in the ability to effectively use the internet, but they're also interested in in training opportunities to assist in bridging that gap. There's a number of other factors that emerge from this, and we're hoping to be able to try to address these and again, in partnership with local not-for-profits that, that work with low-income individuals or the older individuals in the, in the community and can effectively target some solutions that would help bridge the digital divide with these individuals.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
And if this was a follow-up to my Jack Hopkins question, again, what is that looking like? Or did you want to say more about the IT?
No, I was just going to jump in that. I'm sorry we didn't mention the Jack Hopkins. You know, in terms of working with things that work, obviously, there are a lot of stresses in our community, and we know how effective Jack Hopkins has been over the years in moving money out to help these pillars and foundational supports of our community. And I feel like, and I hope you agree, that pushing just a new round of money to let Jack Hopkins run a special round later this year to try to get that money out where the needs are the greatest will help build our social safety net, help people get through this crisis. So it's just meant to accelerate and offer a new round of Jack Hopkins for the committee to run.
So a new application period and a reconvening of the committee rather than looking at what we looked at this year and add to?
I guess whatever you think from, from your committee, if you have enough that you know needs to be done, fine. But if you think a new round would work, it's kind of up to you, I think, from my perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from council members? Let's see. There's four people asked a question on their council. I was trying to spread it out. So anybody who hasn't asked a question, would you like to? Steve, sorry, Councilmember Volin? Please ask.
Yes, I mean, again, we know, I know we're pressed for time. There were a number of questions asked in advance. I'm looking at them now. And of course, it's impossible to answer them all under these circumstances. But the point of them was to give, I mean, just for the, for the record, when committee members ask questions in advance, it's to help staff prepare to answer the questions live during committee. But since we can't answer these questions tonight, can we hope for written answers to the questions by this time next week? That way.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, it's just that way we can follow up with enough time to give you heads up of what we're going to ask on the fifth.
One, we appreciate getting those questions. That's very helpful. Two, we'll get you answers in writing tomorrow. But of course, we welcome if you want to ask them orally tonight for the public to hear, that's fine too, but we will get written answers to those very quickly.
That's appreciated. The only other thing I would say is I would ask some of my colleagues if they have reviewed the questions that were asked in advance, and if they have any questions that they might also like to have answered that may not be answerable tonight. I would just ask my colleagues to look at the questions that have been submitted in writing. Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Rosenbarker? You're muted.
Okay, thanks. I submitted questions ahead of time, so I'm not going to ask those now, but I guess I was just under the impression that we were going to have a presentation. So I didn't, there were, there were some of the categories that I want more detail on. And just like really in general, most of them. But can we anticipate a presentation, or do we need to really ask questions like, I would like more detail on this portion of the spending?
It's really, however it works for you, I know we're, we were pressed for time, so I didn't want to try to do a fifteen or twenty-minute presentation tonight. We certainly can do that. We also can respond in writing about it. And at your direction, what's the best use of the time of council? Happy to do that. And sorry if we should have done a longer one tonight.
Mr. Chair, if I could just say, if there was a slideshow that was going to be presented, if you could simply send that to us, at least we can read it. And that might help answer some of Councilmember Rosenbarker's questions. Was there a slideshow?
We did not have a deck for tonight. We did not.
I see. Okay, well, that, anyway, thank you.
I would, I would suggest Councilmember Rosenbarker send follow-up questions to. Do we want it to be sent through the Chair of Sustainable Committee to Councilmember Scambaluri? Or do you want it sent directly to the mayor?
I would I would just suggest you could go ahead and send them to me. You can copy everybody if you want. We'll assemble them all. Again, you'll get the first round tomorrow in written answers. And then if that prompts more, we're happy to dig into those.
Okay.
But your attorney has another view, maybe. I don't know.
Yes, sir.
Well, just for the members of the public that are interested in in following along with the discussion, if there's a way to do this so that we can push these questions and answers out to the public as well. I'm sure we've got lots of interested folks. So once they're all compiled, I'm happy to make those available. But just as as we're going through this process, try to keep that in mind.
Sure.
Other questions from council members? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I wanted to follow up on the previous question about the $35,000 for IT investments. So I still didn't quite understand from Mr. Dietz's answer, what exactly is this money going towards? Are we going to help people get Wi-Fi access, actual, you know, iPads? What's the bottom line? What is this money going to go to?
This.
Dietz?
Yes.
Oh, there you are. Sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, this this proposal is for for a grants program. One of the things that we're we're planning to do with the survey results, that's really the the foundation of a larger larger digital equity strategic plan that we're working on. You know, that being said, we did have results that indicated there were some areas of activity that we should we should explore. We'd like to to accelerate that and and do so with with partners in our local not-for-profit community. We'll be looking to them for for ideas, you know, in a similar fashion to, you know, grants projects that the the council already, you know, works on. We'll we'll be looking to those partners who are either already working in areas that that address connection connecting their their constituents to to digital services or new new ideas that are emerging from from that that sector. We didn't want to necessarily, you know, prejudge and determine what exactly these funds should be used. We just know that, you know, our goal is to address and mitigate the the digital inequity disparities that we that we have discovered with with our data from this from this survey.
So the grants will go to nonprofits that will then assist individuals?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions from council members? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. In looking through the questions that's been compiled, one of my questions was the $114,250 for managing the projects. But that question has already been posed as part of the overall question, so I'm looking for the answer to that. My secondary question, what I'd like to hear, and it's pretty clear that when we make investments, you get a bigger bang for your buck depending on partnerships and collaborations. I'd like to hear a little bit more of planning along those lines. Specifically, I think there's $50,000 for a partnership between Parks and Rec and Centerstone. Just a little bit more detail on on how we can get a bigger bang for our buck through collaborating or partnerships. So nothing specific, but if you care to touch on that a little bit, Mayor, that'd be good. But I'll look forward to the answers later.
Sure. And and we and I don't know if Mr. Underwood, if you want more information about that, basically four or 5% for overhead that we just felt was appropriate to identify for all for all these funds, we can we can share that with you. And absolutely, we're frankly, we're balancing two things, right? On the one hand, speed to the market, getting getting this out. On the other hand, partnerships, which I totally agree with you, are are key. They're actually helpful in speed, but they're also helpful in amplifying what we do.
Right.
The partnership you mentioned with Centerstone is a great example. We already have three teams that are underway right now through Parks with Centerstone. And Paul McDevitt could talk about that. And this is just saying, let's do more of those. We like what they do. They're helping hard-to-employ people get into the workplace. Partnership with the Mill to do the coding school is a is a very close partnership. Partnership with BEDC and Ivy Tech and others on the life sciences investment is is helping that happen. Partnership with SCAP on the LIHEED kind of program to work on getting that efficiency going. So any place we can, we're looking to do that kind of partnership. But it it it, you know, they're not always available. And and the other aspect of this is if this money doesn't get out quickly, it's kind of defeating the purpose of some quick response recovery money. But Paul, I don't know, would you like a little more information about Centerstone or right now? I think Paul McDevitt's here if you want to hear about that. It's amazing program.
Actually, I think some of the questions will address that as we move forward. So thank you for offering that. Thank you.
I would like to ask if Councilmember Rallo has any questions you would like to ask in this forum?
Thank you for the offer. I have none at this point. I'm formulating some for next time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to ask a procedural question from our attorney. Is are we, because it's Council of the Hole, do we need to solicit public comment during this session? Okay. Does anybody have a burn any burning questions they want to finish tonight with? Okay, let's go to public comment. We have.
Councilmember Scambaluri had a.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
Please go ahead.
This is probably a comment disguised as a question, but and so I'll just fess up to that. Will there be an opportunity for us to hear from the private sector and from small businesses? We've talked about a $5,000 subsidy for job creation. We've talked about coding school and what is still quite vague to me, life sciences support. Could we at some point hear from the chamber or BEDC or whoever appropriate what they think of these ideas? You know, will that $5,000 actually move the needle for some employers? Is the coding school a good idea? So can we hear from those at some point? Not tonight, obviously, but at some point.
Yes, absolutely, both in written answers and then testimony as as we can, either written or oral at the next session.
Great, thank you.
Alex, do you agree with that, right?
Yeah, and I would go one step further, which is in both cases generously have offered to help us formulate in some cases what what the plan of action is and how to make it as meaningful and impactful as possible. So I think I think we not only would hear from them directly, but also bring them in to to be part of the process of developing and finalizing programs.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any burning questions before I go to public comments? All right. Mr. Lucas, if you will look and see if if any member of the public would like to make a comment on 20 ordinance 2003, and I would ask them to raise their hand or send a note to Mr. Lucas so that he can pull you up and allow you to speak.
So I see one one member of the public, the BEDC, not sure who it is from the BEDC, but they should be unmuted and ready to comment.
Good evening. Thank you so much. I just wanted to.
And and apologize, I'm gonna just to to keep things consistent for members of the public, I'm gonna just enable audio for for all public commenters. So go ahead.
Okay. My name is Jennifer Pearl and I'm the president of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. And we just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to both weigh in on this. Alex was great in meeting with our team earlier this week to talk about some of the details of the proposal. And we're taking that back to our members and others. And we're also trying to gather data from partners at Indiana University right now, including the IVRC and the Crisis Technologies Innovation Lab to weigh in on some of the economic trends that we're seeing. And so we're we're looking to bring some of that to the table for these discussions for phases one, two, and three. And so if anyone has questions about that or even certain data that you're looking for in that process, we'd be happy to try to gather that for you. And we will also be happy to engage in the process moving forward, you know, weighing in on certain parts of the plan as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Pearl. Is there any other comments from the public they wish to share at this time? Anything else, Mr. Lucas?
Not seen any additional requests to comment.
All right. As Chair, I'm going to ask, is there anything else we need to finish up in this first council of the whole meeting regarding this ordinance? That's important in a preliminary sense so that we can make sure we're efficient for the next time. Councilmember Volin?
Well, again, I had hoped that my questions, there would have been time to have my questions answered so that it would help in formulating the discussion for two weeks from now. So again, I'll just reiterate that I'd like to have, I mean, I don't want the administration to feel like they have to answer questions by tomorrow. Simply if they if they answer them by a week from now, then, you know, we can, that's enough time for us to formulate new new questions. So I don't feel like they need to rush to do it. We have time built in.
So so.
No, like, that's all. Thank you.
Let let me ask, is there a time limit or a kill date on when should we have this second set of questions? Should we have those to send to the administration?
As far as I'm concerned, questions answered in writing don't allow for the opportunity to ask emergent questions. And so, you know, that's important to be able to, I mean, heard by somebody live so that people can hear those answers. I'll settle for written ones here, but, you know, like, if we're going to benefit from a second meeting, and clearly we need time to have, there's a lot of questions that weren't able to be answered tonight. You know, like people, the staff needs time to prepare to answer our questions in discussion. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Lucas?
Just so it's not lost, I know when we made the agenda for the Sustainability Sustainable Development Committee, we had also listed Resolution 2012. The committee of the whole took up the the app board first, which is fine, but in the remaining few minutes, I don't know if anybody from the, if it's the Chair's pleasure, you may want to hear. That that resolution is dependent on the ordinance passing. I mean, and it also could be heard in one meeting. It it appeared on the agenda for the committee. So the committee of the whole is not obligated to to address it tonight, but there are a few minutes left and it did appear on the agenda, so.
May I ask the mayor if he would like to comment on 2012?
I think I would probably turn that to Mr. Underwood if he'd like to to comment on that about that issue. And I would just say, Mr. Volin, for example, you asked a number of questions about housing. I know in the written in the written questions, which we will share answers with, but also happy to discuss those here anytime at any length we want to. But Mr. Underwood, do you want to, are you the right person to address that? The other ordinance?
If I'm the correct one, but I will. So I just like the fact I put on a button down shirt for tonight. So this is just a housekeeping based on the rest on the app board and some of the proposed monies that are already. Are the council's process for moving money within a major category, but between lines. And and so this hits the limit. So we included that to be safe. Thank you.
Is there anything remarkable about the movement?
It's probably worth noting that a significant portion, close to half of the housing-focused assistance that we're outlining here is directly from proposed to be coming from the Housing Development Fund. So those are those are actually not the the tax dollars that we're talking, they're more than the tax dollars. So this ordinance is needed, I believe, to move that within one of the line items of the Housing Development Fund. Is that right, Mr. Underwood?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Thank you, Mayor Hamilton. Is there anything else that we need to do as housekeeping or to finish up? Councilmember Flaherty, did you have a question?
I actually think Councilmember Scambaluri had her hand raised. I had a kind of general comment, though, if there's time to make it.
Please, Councilmember Scambaluri? Muted.
Sorry, not a housekeeping question, but just a preview of how I'm I'll be approaching this next week. I envision it would be really helpful to me to have some specific examples of the kinds of things that are being proposed. So under life sciences support, we're providing life sciences job support. And I I'm not an idiot, but I don't know what that means. All right. And likewise, the the working toward digital equity, I think, is Councilmember Piedmont Smith got at this a little bit, but I'm still not clear on what we're actually spending that money on. So just a preview that I'm going to kind of push on that next week and specific examples help. Thank you.
Absolutely. More time will help. We'll get a little more time.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you, Member. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, I had similar comments to make and want to echo Councilmember Scambaluri's comments that I think really most of the questions submitted by councilmembers kind of go to the lack of detail on sort of the programs. We're just wanting to know what that's going to look like. So again, some of this has been fleshed out a little bit. Some of it will be fleshed out more from the questions. But perhaps it's worth for each item in the in the memo from Mayor Hamilton to go ahead and tell us what what you know. I understand there's some uncertainty at this point about exactly how the money will be, you know, going to different programs and with different partnerships. But I think just to the extent that you could fill us in on all the anticipated programs, you know, I think that would help us a lot. So just wanted to advocate for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Volin and then Councilmember Sandberg.
Just briefly, part of the extended process is to allow councilmembers to sensitively develop amendments if they see fit. With, you know, the the change in schedule here, like, I just want to ask my colleagues if they're planning amendments to this app board so that we can get it done by August 12. Those amendments should be ready to be discussed at the August 5 Committee of the Hole. And they really should be done by Friday to go out of the packet. Friday, that would be the 31st of July. So I would ask everyone who has any thought to be prepared to prepare an amendment by Friday, the 31st. Thank you.
Good point. Councilmember Sandberg?
Overall, as this has been presented, I think it makes perfect sense with respect to our response to the crisis we're in, trying to get the economy in as strong a place as we can get it with city investments. So I I couldn't think of amendments at this point that I would propose based on questions that have been asked tonight and have already been asked and have been answered. My biggest concern as an at-large representative is being able to talk to the public who are expressing concerns about the investment of money and what's going to be the the direct result. It sounds to me like they need reassurances that these are basically monies that are coming from our reversions, our rainy day fund. I know there's been some concern about any raising of taxes that may need to be done in order to afford some of these this thing. So again, between now and the next time we talk about this again, that would be my goal, is to get the public assurance. And I think many of us are asking for a little bit more detail about what exactly are the programs in which these dollars are going to go toward so that we, as representatives of the people who are contacting us, can make a good decision about this. Overall, though, it looks like it's definitely a movement in. Overall though, it looks like it's definitely a movement in, in a most necessary direction. So my first impressions of it this evening would be to vote in favor of more discussion on it certainly. But overall approving it, if we can again, give assurances to the public that these are smart uses of our dollars in these tough times. Thanks.
Thank you. May I respond, Mr. Chairman, just very?
Please do, Mayor Hamilton.
Two, two quick points, and I know we're tight on time. One, absolutely, thank you, Member Sandberg. These are, these are reversion dollars. These are explicitly reversion dollars from 2019 appropriations that we have husbanded, kept, protected, that we now feel are appropriate to invest in our community to help in recovery. That's point one. Point two, to several that have asked very appropriately, can we get more detail? We will tell you everything we know about what we think can happen. We will tell you some things that we don't know and be transparent about all of that because we don't know everything. But we do, I think, have lined up to, to, to identify some needs that can be met and we'll share all that we do know and we'll also let you know some things that we just don't know yet.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna make one comment and then I'm gonna call on Councilmember Sims. I, I agree that some more specificity would be really great. And I'll send some questions along to request some specificity. Councilmember Sims?
Just simply as a reminder to the Chair of this committee, the whole meeting, of your nine o'clock commitment, and it's now 9:01. Just a reminder.
No comment. Thank you very much. Do we conclude this by asking for a, a motion to? Or are we just, can we just?
There's no need to, there's no need to ask for a motion. You can simply conclude the meeting. If you want to call for a, a motion, you can do so.
All right. I would like, I would like to conclude the meeting so that I can keep my promise to Councilmember Rosenbarger. And thank you very much. I appreciate the discussion and allowing me to run the meeting tonight. Thank you very much.